Everybody and welcome to the League of Women Voters Macomb County Candidate Forum for the Romeo Board of Education. I'm Terri Gibb and for the candidates, they know this well. I am a brand-new candidate coordinator for, forum coordinator for the league. And I am taking over for the expert here, which is Kathy Pour. And she has done it for a number of years and so I'm sort of still in training. So anyway, so we want to thank Kathy for all her work. She is now, now we've put her as president again. So anyways, the League of Women Voters is a national organization whose mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens in government. The league neither opposes nor supports candidates or political parties. We welcome all citizens ages 16 and over to membership. And now I would like to turn it over to our moderator, Maria Rivera, who is a longtime league member.
No applause needed, but thank you. Always appreciated. I would like, so my name is Maria Rivera and good evening and welcome to the Romeo Board of Education Candidate Forum, being conducted at the WBRTV studio in Washington Township. This presentation is of candidate, is of the candidates and is for the general election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. We ask that everyone, please turn off your cellphones. Electronics of any kind are not to be used during the forum. There are no candidate campaign materials allowed in this forum room. This includes buttons, coffee mugs, t-shirts, anything. The format of this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. The format was reviewed with and agreed to by each of the candidates prior to the forum. There are seven candidates running for office. There are three open seats, each for a six-year term. Please note that this forum is about the presentation of the candidates and their opinions to enable voters to make an informed decision at the polls. The League of Women Voters is providing this forum as an opportunity to voter, for voters to learn about the candidates' views. Statements expressed by the candidates are not endorsed nor opposed by the League of Women Voters. Also, the league does not certify any candidate responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at the forum. This recording is the property of WBRTV and the League of Women Voters of Macomb County and cannot be used for campaign purposes or for any other use. Candidates may place a link to the entire forum on their websites. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response time to each question, and a one-minute closing statement. In alphabetical order, the candidates are Allison Bowman, Erin Bauer, Brielle Chahaki, Wayne Connor, Kristy Seitz, Jason Smith, and Lou Welch. The order of seating was determined by Dawn Lott. Assisting are several volunteer league members tonight, and they are Marilyn Radzinski, Shelly Latake, Terri Gibb, Debbie Griffith, Catherine Labune, and our timekeeper Kathy Pour. Questions are written by members of the audience and given to one of our question gatherers. The question gatherers will give the questions to the question sorters, who will sort the questions for redundancy and inappropriate language. Our timekeeper Kathy Pour will hold up a card when there are 15 seconds remaining to your answer time, and a card indicating stop when the time has expired. There will be no verbal comments or applause from the audience during the forum. Please be respectful of candidates who are providing valuable voter information and of the voters who need this information to make an informed decision at the polls. As moderator, I reserve the right to close discussion on any question. We will begin now with the candidates' one-minute opening statements. Closing statements will be in reverse order. Mr. Bauer, you may, I'm sorry, Mr. Boyer, sorry about that. One-minute opening statement, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, and having us here tonight in WBRTW. I'm Aaron Boyer, running for Romeo School Board, 24-year member of the community. I've got three children that have graduated from Romeo Schools, two currently in. I have served on multiple boards for nonprofits as well as small organizations. I am currently the Global Director of Design and Engineering for an automotive firm with a very diverse group worldwide. I've worked on the high school, Romeo High School's Committee for Engineering and Architecture. I've been advisor to them for about seven years now. A big fan of academies, I think they do great, especially helping the kids decide where they want to go. And I stand for traditional education, preparing the workforce of the future, and I'm for the challenge.
Thank you so much. Ms. Seitz, your opening statement.
Hello. Thank you, League of Women Voters, WBRTW, and everyone for coming out tonight, or yeah, tonight. I'm Kristy Seitz. I am a 2004 Romeo graduate. I have been in this community my entire life. My family is, you know, five generations deep. I'm sure you guys have all seen that. I have been, I have two children that are going to be going through Romeo Schools. One is currently in the preschool program and one will be next year. Also a proud Bulldog auntie. So I am very focused on the community, kind of bridging some gaps. A career services professional, so I see maybe where our future workforce is lacking as far as going out there and kind of bridging that gap between becoming a graduate and adding into the workforce. Super passionate about our district and looking forward to letting you learn more about me tonight.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, please.
Excuse me, my name is Jason Smith. I am an 11-year resident of the area. My wife and I have made this home since. We are passionate about the community. My wife is a Girl Scout leader. I work locally for an automotive supplier. And the reason I'm running is I noticed that there were two open seats, one incumbent running. I want to give back to the community. That's my first and foremost reason for doing it. In doing so, I want to make sure that everybody understands how passionate I am about not just people that I discuss and talk to about things, but listening to diverse perspectives because I feel like one of the great strengths of this area is its diverse viewpoints and the passion of the community. So as a school board member, I will take every single viewpoint and feedback into consideration when I make decisions. So I want to make sure everybody understands where I'm coming from, what I've done, and if there are additional questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on, can, when you talk, can you please get a little closer, or move the microphones a little closer to you, just to make sure? Good. Thank you so much. We'll now go to Ms. Chahaki, please.
Hi, my name is Brielle Chahaki. I have three elementary-age children in this school district. I am a substitute teacher for the district. I am on the PTO council for the district. I'm on multiple committees. I volunteer in the library and the lunchroom, so I am all-in for this district. I am a strong conservative Christian, and I am not afraid to say that or ashamed to say that. I believe in traditional education, age-appropriate curriculum, and full transparency. I am running because over the next six years, our district is going to go through a ton of growth, and I want to make sure that we're going to do what's best for all the stakeholders and be a voice for those who think they can't have a voice right now.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Bowman, a one-minute opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Allison Bowman. I've been a military and a law enforcement spouse for the last 20 years. I'm a mother of three teenage daughters, two that attend Romeo Schools. Throughout my children's school years, I've been a dedicated classroom volunteer, PTA president, reading tutor, you name it, I've pretty much done it. As a sign language interpreter, I facilitated communication for deaf students in a variety of public, private, and college classroom settings. Special education classrooms are where I typically worked, and they were my most favorite students to work with. Currently, I serve on our district's Sex Education Advisory Board and on our Romeo High School Parent Club. In Romeo Schools, I've worked as a food service, or I'm sorry, a cashier in food service, a substitute teacher, and currently I'm a school security specialist at the ninth-grade academy at the high school. My experience as an employee and active parent in our Romeo Schools provides me with a clear view of the many successes in our district. I've built positive working relationships with teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, and most importantly, students. So I desire to work collectively to-
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowman. And Mr. Connor, your opening statement.
Hi, I am Wayne Connor II. I am run, been running for reelection for the school board. I'm looking forward to continuing my support for the community, students, teachers, and faculty. I have a master's degree in leadership, and I've served in many positions and different positions from president all the way down to different levels. And it enhances me to be a better board member for Romeo Schools. I am a legislative liaison for Romeo Schools for MISD, which is Macomb County School District. And we find out what's going on at state and federal level, and then I bring it back to the board and I tell them what's going on in policies in our senators in our houses in Michigan, and federal. And my vision for the school and the, as a school board and my school board, including continuing to make safety and secure, security a priority in all schools. We have safe entrances right now, and we can go beyond that. And prioritizing mental health issues such as suicide prevention.
Thank you so much, Mr. Connor. Your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, my time's up, okay. Hell is fast, okay. I'm looking, huh?
First question now, we'll go first to Ms. Seitz. Ms. Seitz, what is one major issue, what is one major issue facing the school district, and how would you address it?
I believe that one of the major issues that is facing our school district currently is coming back from the lack of trust that happened, I believe during, you know, COVID and beyond. I think that we've lost a lot of trust in our, in our teachers and a lot in our district. And I, I think that we're working on getting that back, but it's not quite where it was before the pandemic. You know, I'd like to bridge gaps and see, you know, where parents really feel like that disconnect is coming. I hear it from different levels of, you know, from high school down to even the preschool, even with enrollment. So that is something that I see going on in our district.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, what major issue is facing the school district, and how would you address it?
I would echo a little bit of what Ms. Seitz said. I think there's a little bit of a disconnect in terms of, related to COVID, right? I think the point about it not being, or there not being as much trust, I think, has to be addressed. But I'd say in addition to that, there's also the concern about school safety. I don't think a kid that doesn't feel safe in school can learn, and I think that that's something that schools have to address, especially as we see increasing numbers and incidences of violence and/or threats. The solution to fixing that, my suggestion would be to work closely with law enforcement and with the contractors that we've put in place to ensure that we can find a way to not just get rid of the threats, but to find a way to address them before they become an issue. So I would say building trust upon the schools, in between the administrators, the teachers, and parents, and additionally, school safety.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Chahaki, what is one major issue facing the school district, and how would you address it?
Right now, I think one of the major issues is transparency. It's, it goes along with theirs as well about trust. As a board member, I think we need to get into the schools and really talk to teachers and principals and parents and really ask what the need is and what is really going on in the schools as far as the transparency and letting parents, bridging the gap between home and school life.
Okay, thank you very much. And Ms. Bowman?
Well, as a school security specialist at the high school, strengthening school security is one of my number-one concerns. Romeo's doing a good job, but I think we can do a better job. We need more scenario-based training, situational awareness, pretty much from elementary on up, to get these kids and teachers and staff to recognize the signs before something bad happens. That's something, when you look at every incident that's happened everywhere around the country, all the warning signs were there, but people ignored them. So we need to really work on that. Secondly, I think we need to work on achieving academic success for students. Post-COVID test scores, a lot of things, a lot of students are behind, especially the younger grades that were in kindergarten on up from COVID. So I really think we need to work collectively with parents, teachers, administrators, and the board to see how we can get these kids back to where they need to be.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Connor?
Continuing to make safety and security a priority in all of our schools. Prioritizing mental health issues such as suicide prevention. We need to hire and retain our teachers that we have and the support staff. And we need to support the students, you know, for college and normal jobs, like we have an academy, which is a really good deal, I think, at Romeo Schools.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Boyer, one major issue facing the school district, and how would you address it?
Yes. I think there's two top issues, security and growth. I figure security will come up later. I'll address the growth issue right now. As you know, our community is growing exponentially at this point. One of the big things is, we're going to have to figure out what to do with it. Going to be some really tough questions, addressing the issues like school of choice. Do we go for a large Dakota-sized type high school or split high schools? These are going to be some major issues that's going to affect the community as a whole. One way I think will be very good for us to attack this issue is to have a survey. The voters should be able to have an input and choice on that. Ultimately, the board would have the final decision, but this is going to be a big decision, and it's a, as you know, as you see the growth coming out here, it's going to be a big thing in the next six years, definitely for this term. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next question, we'll go first to Mr. Smith. What is your position on parental rights in the Romeo School District?
I think that's kind of a broad term. Is there any additional context, or was that the overarching question?
It's the overarching question.
Okay. Well, without a specific context, I'll have to say that I think parents should have the ability to make decisions on behalf of their kids. And I can speak from my experience as a parent during COVID. We had priority number one of getting our kids back into school. There were things that people agreed with and disagreed with our approach, but at the end of the day, we had to make the best decision for our family. That said, I think that also applies in a lot of cases to a lot of other topics that maybe are controversial. I think in general, depending on which topic we're discussing, I think, you know, student safety should be the utmost importance, and I think parents generally know what's best for their kids and what makes their kids safer. I think that needs to be considered in the context of the discussion happening. However, like I said, I will speak only to one specific example due to the time constraint, and I think I hopefully answered that question.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Chahaki?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. What is your position on parental rights in the Romeo School District?
Sure. It's pretty self-explanatory. I know what's best for my children, and that's how I, how we look at everything. I, I am the sole provider for my children. I am the mother, my husband. We should make the decisions based off of our own children and our family.
Okay. And Ms. Bowman, please.
Well, being a parent and a volunteer and an employee in Romeo Schools, I think Romeo does a pretty good job with transparency when it comes to parents, but I think we can do better, especially when, you know, dangerous, potentially dangerous situations arise. Parents often feel like they're not getting the communication, they don't know what's going on. So I think that collectively, the district could do better in their notification systems on how they contact, pretty much after something happens. So, you know, parents aren't sitting on pins and needles wondering what's happening. Social media and the texting and the cellphones are often the problem with that, so I would definitely like to see, you know, more strict usage of those cellphones. So when negative things do happen, we have a more controlled environment.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Connor, what is your position on parental rights in the Romeo School District?
Parental rights, all, all parents have parental rights. I have a grandson, Max, he's going to Havel right now. He's in kindergarten, and I think all parents have rights to get ahold of their schools and talk to us and come to board meetings. If you have any questions, start right at the school, and if you don't get an answer, then you go up and you go higher and higher. If you have to go to the superintendent, then you go to him, and he'll come to the board if it has to. But we try to get everything resolved right at the local level.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Boyer, what is your position on parental rights in the school district?
Thank you. I appreciate the amount of emails and contact and information that we get from teachers, weekly, daily. They do a very good job of letting us know what's going on in that, with two kids in the schools right now. But ultimately, the answer to the question there is, I do feel parents have the, the final right, the final say. They decide for their kids what's best. There's a lot of situations where something might come up in a class that should be transparent to them ahead of time, so that they know whether they want their child involved or not. We don't always know what might traumatize a child or cause something that'll harm them from their past, and that needs to be constantly communicated so that we can protect those children, and the parents have the final right to say whether they're involved in that curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Seitz, please.
All right, thank you. So echoing what everyone up here has said, I do believe that parents get the final say. I do believe that Romeo does a pretty good job at honoring most parental rights, as long as it's not, you know, causing safety to other students. Personally, I, I know Romeo has a pretty solid opt-out program for things. I think you know your child better than a teacher's going to or anyone else. I do think if there is an issue, pop, maybe before opting out, maybe you have a conversation with the teacher or the administration, but I do believe, you know, strongly that parents have the final say. That, that is your child, they are yours, you know what they are ready to handle, so.
Thank you so much. Next question, first to Ms. Chahaki. What is the best way for the school board to communicate with students and parents?
I guess I want to know in regards to what? Just a general?
I can't speak for the-
Repeat the question.
For the question, sure. What is the best way for the school board to communicate with students and parents?
Well, for me, I, I want to be in person with people. I like emails, but I feel like you don't really get a grasp of how people are speaking to each other in an email. So if you're asking as far as that, I want to do it in person with people face-to-face. That's, that's what I would do.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bowman, please. The best way to communicate, for the school board to communicate with students and parents?
Students and parents, okay. Well, first off, I would invite students and parents to come to meetings, let them know, social media is typically the way we get everyone's attention. Let them know the, when the meetings are, when they can come, and encourage them to ask questions if they have any. Emails, texts, that pretty much already happens, but I'm big with face-to-face. If I have a positive thing to say or a concern, I typically will have a meeting with an administrator or teacher. So pretty much echoing what Brielle said, I prefer face-to-face so you can really get a grasp on what people want to talk to you about.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. And Mr. Connor?
Now, we are, we are emailing information to the parents, and we have a newsletter. And as she's saying, in-person is the best way to resolve anything that you could ever have. And, you know, we need to involve the, the parents, the students, and we invite you to come to any school board meeting, and you can speak at any school board meeting on any subject for three minutes, and we will, the superintendent or someone from the board to president will give back information to you, what you had, what you spoke about.
Thank you so much. Please make sure you're a little closer to the microphone, okay? Just, we don't want to lose any audio. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Boyer, please. What is the best way for the school board to communicate with students and parents?
Well, starting off with parents, I think the board, board meetings are essential because both the, the teacher, the board, a way to communicate to the parents and allows them time to communicate back concerns and issues that they may have. Obviously, email, it's our easiest way of communicating in this day and age. I do like the parent portal, the portals, we call it. Just be able to quickly check how my kid's grades are and where he's at, and keep a constant, and actually, it's very in-depth where it's telling you where their assignments are and everything. It's a very great way of communicating. But board meetings, emails, and the portals, very good.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Seitz, please.
With communication with the board, I'm also with my colleagues up here. I believe face-to-face is essential. I think it's great to go to the meetings or make, you know, a specific meeting with a board member if there's a, a specific one you want to talk to. I'm also big on a follow-up email, however, to provide clarification of anything that you guys discussed, just to make sure that not only the parent or whoever, the stakeholder, feels like they were heard and had all of their concerns addressed and heard, but also, you know, just so that there is a, you know, paper trail to make sure that everybody knows where, what the conversation was. So it can't just be, you know, hearsay through the community.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, the best way for the school board to communicate with students and parents?
I think it depends on the topic. If you're anything like me, I think most people get quite a few emails in their inbox every day, so it's tough sometimes to sort through those for things that may or may not be relevant. So I would put the onus back a little bit onto the community to say, pay attention to what's happening at your school board, pay attention to the topics that are being brought up at the school board, and pay attention to who's speaking at the school board for these topics. Beyond that, the communication should depend also on the context. If it's a safety issue, I feel like that needs to be communicated in a more urgent way than, say, an email. If it's an informational topic, I think that can generally go out in one of the medias that we've discussed. And if it's just a general, you know, meeting notice or something like that, I think it can be posted. So I would say additional context needs to happen, but I would again, put the onus back a little bit on the community to say, what is important to you, and it's up to you to determine what way you need to receive that information. It's not to say the school board isn't responsible for it, but it's to convince everyone to be proactive.
Thank you. Next question, we'll go first to Ms. Bowman. With the rising rates of ADHD and autism spectrum disorders, are there any changes you would like to see in Romeo in regards to our special education accessibility and programs?
Well, I work alongside a lot of the special ed educators, para-staff, para-pros, and the students every day. Funding, it comes down to funding. We have a lot of kids with a lot of variety of needs. Some of them are mainstream in and out of the classroom, some of them leave the classroom for testing or certain subjects. So Romeo does do a very good job of that. A lot of the IEP support teachers will follow these students to the classes where they need support, depending on the situation. But I think it comes down to funding. We need to get probably more special ed teachers, more support staff, and just maybe create a center for some of these students that like the normalcy of going to the same place at the same time every day. So I think that would be the best thing we could do.
Thank you. And Mr. Connor?
Students, special ed, I know we have, you said you, you work with them, you have a special ed, and I guess the major thing, like she's saying basically, is funding is a major thing. We need more money, and that's how somehow, I'm the legislative liaison for Romeo at MISD, and we try to look for more funding for, you know, special education, and we just need more mon-money, but I think Romeo's doing a good job, special ed. Plus, we have MISD, they'll help us with special ed too.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Boyer, with the rising rates of ADHD and autism spectrum disorders, are there any changes you would like to see in Romeo in regards to our special education accessibility and programs?
My mom has always been a para-pro for the MISD, and I know this is a little far on the, not from ADHD, but I always know when we go out somewhere and see a Down Syndrome kid, and they just love, hey, Ms. Boyer, this is your son, and give me a big hug and all that. So special education is, I know, very near and dear to my family because of my mom and near to, dear to me. I know the teachers are the first line in helping with getting kids into special ed programs, but from there, our goals are to make sure it's funded, have the right advisors and specialists to support the teachers and the staff that are working in special ed, and by, funding is probably the primary issue for this.
Thank you. And Ms. Seitz, please.
I talk about this kind of often. My, my son does have a speech delay, so we, he is in the ECSE program at Crosswell. We did come over from MISD, and one of my things I've learned through this, and it, it goes back to funding, is that the communication and navigating through that as a parent, we often find things out reactively rather than proactively. I think there's just a lack of staffing that can kind of navigate us through the special ed program. A lot of times, I'm finding out more information from other parents in the district, and so I think we could do a little bit better of maybe almost having a, like, how-to process, especially for the, you know, people who are entering into those programs. I know Crosswell now has that, you know, brand- I know Crosswell now has that, you know, brand new facility. We're adding more kids, so I think that would definitely be helpful for enrollment.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, please.
I would just say in general, a lot of what I hear about the issues with the programs at Romeo are secondhand. I will say that I will echo what I think just about everybody up here has said. That is to ensure that there is adequate funding, adequate staffing, adequate training, and adequate awareness. Because I think in general, that tends to be one of the issues I've seen. Again, drawing on the experience of others, I would say that procedurally, there are things that could be improved upon, particularly with enrollment. And I will say too, that again, ensuring that the class sizes are commensurate with the needs of the students in that class. Because without the attention that they need, they won't get the skills that they need in order to continue moving forward. So I would say just again, not to exactly echo, but to say my experience has largely been based on secondhand knowledge and funding, training, and awareness are the three main topics that I see would benefit from some additional attention.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Chahaki, with the rising rates of ADHD and autism spectrum disorders, are there any changes you would like to see in Romeo in regards to our special education accessibility and programs?
Yes, I will agree with everybody up here. I will speak with experience in my own children's school is it is lack of support. We definitely need more para pros, which again, comes down to funding. And I think, other than that, I think we do a great job, we just need more support.
Thank you so much. Next question first to Mr. Connor. What is the school board's role in keeping schools safe?
The roles for the school board, keeping everything safe, the members, is that we have committees that work on safety and security as a prior, that's one of my priorities, no matter what. And we have different people that are on those committees. And we have reports, and then we bring those to the meeting, which the board means once a month, which you guys can, you can all attend. And I think we're doing a pretty good job on safety. But I was in the military, safety and security is, it's never-ending. You have to work on it all the time in order to make it safe for the kids. We do have safe entrances right now, which I think is a great thing for the schools, but I think we could even do more of that.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Boyer, what is the board's role in keeping schools safe?
Yes, again, excuse me. We can't afford to make mistakes. We need to make sure we get everything right. These are our kids, these are our precious kids, we do not want anything to happen to them. One thing, working with Washington Township for SRO for the ninth grade academy. I know the board's hand, the current board's hands are tied on this. It is a joint venture between the two, working with them to make sure we can get an SRO for the ninth grade academy. But personally, I, dealing with security in my own company, very good consultants is what is needed, superior equipment. You know, equipment is a key in a lot of cases. We see a lot of growth in this industry in helping the teachers to protect the students and protect themselves. But our primary goal is to protect the students, the teachers, and the staff in the schools.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Seitz, please.
So in my opinion, the school board's role in safety is making sure that we have the funding and not cutting corners when it comes to our children's safety. Obviously, as they mentioned, we need to make sure we have SRO officers at the schools that, you know, our children are safe. Making sure we keep a pulse on what's out there nationally, whether that's consultants, paying attention to. I mean, I know we had the unfortunate Oxford shooting, paying attention to what were the signs and making sure that, you know, we are allocating the funds to to keep our kids safe.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith, what is the the school board's role in keeping schools safe?
I think school boards have a responsibility to listen to everybody in the community and to listen to and to look for the signs that point to a potential danger and additionally, continuous reevaluation of the methods in place. We all know what happened recently isn't the same as what happened 25 years ago. We additionally also know that the threats and the things that are happening in parts of the schools and the mediums that people are using are different. So I would say it is, it is, the school board is responsible for ensuring, to Ms. Seitz's comment, and I think to just about everybody else, that we have adequate funding, that we are partnering with local law enforcement, that we are listening to the consultants and to the contractors that we've hired, and that we are doing absolutely everything in our power to keep our kids safe. No questions.
Thank you so much. Ms. Chahaki, the school board's role in keeping schools safe?
I believe the the role for the the board is to, funding for sure, make sure that we have enough SROs, make sure we are up to date with the the first and like top quality of things that we can afford apparently. Make sure we go into the schools and talk to the principals and the teachers of what we are possibly missing and also talking to our local law enforcement as well.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Bowman, please.
Well, safety and security is our number one concern for most parents, teachers, employees. We do have a new director of security, the board members, the superintendent, I know they do meet certain times. And then they report back to the board. I would like to see more detailed reports for the public, for parents, so we know what's going on at each building. And I'd like to make access to those reports easier for parents, staff, and students. Ask the teachers and the students and the parents what they would like to see or what they, where they see it's lacking. Get their input because they, we, I are in the buildings every day. And I'd also like to see the board members attend the training that the staff does. Like, we attend divert training, we have other kinds of training. I would like to see the board members participate into that training so they can really get hands-on experience to see what we're learning and what maybe we could improve on.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Boyer will get the first question, or get the next, be first to answer the next question. As a potential board member, please state your current involvement in the schools. Give examples how you engage with students or school events.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier in my opening statement, I've been on the, an advisor to the board, or the, the econ, I'm sorry, the Academy of Engineering and Architecture. I've worked with Evan Dawson for years. Engineering is near and dear to my heart. A year ago, we brought a group of teachers to one of our premier plants in Detroit, got a tour of them. I was very impressed with the questions that the teachers asked. One of the questions, what do you look for when you're hiring? I'm looking for drive. I loved that that came from a gym teacher, it wasn't in engineering. It was, it was very broad in the people that came. Also, we have a very strong internship program at my company. We hired a kid this past year. He was found at Oakland University, but he graduated from Romeo High School. And he said, one of the biggest things that helped him get through the job in, for our program, was his training at Romeo High School, not even what he had learned in college yet. So great job to the academies, great job to the engineering academics. I could go on for a while, though.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Seitz, please.
Yep. So as I stated, my children are in preschool, so I am going to be and signed up to be a classroom volunteer. I have been involved in the school, I obviously attend the PTOC events. I have been setting up on my own some of the fundraisers to help support the kids who couldn't afford to go to CJ Berrymore's last year. We've donated to like the Giving Trees at all the elementary schools through a local club. And then we are currently setting up a big fundraiser for one of the parents who needs help for her child. So that's my involvement currently.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, as a potential board member, please state your current involvement in the schools. Give examples how you engage with students or school events.
Yep, I'm the father of two children in elementary school, very active in their day-to-day activities. As as someone who works full-time, my wife is a Girl Scout troop leader, so that tightens up some of our time as well. I volunteer when I can for school-related events, and I am present at everything my kids go to. Running for school board to become more involved because I think it's a great way to give back to the community that my wife and I and our two daughters love as much as we do. So I am looking to expand my service to the community by doing this. And I am very humbled and thankful for people listening to me and for giving me a chance.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Chahaki, please.
Sure. I am a substitute teacher for Romeo Community Schools. I am on the professional development committee, I am on the sex education committee. I am in the lunchroom twice a week, I work in the library twice a week. I am on the PTO council for the entire district, which is, a parent from each school in the district collaborate with Dr. Robinson. I I head up most of our events at our school with other parents. I am there probably five days a week.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Bowman, please.
Yes, like Brielle, I am on the sex edu, sex education advisory committee for the district. I'm also a member of the Romeo High School Parent Club, so we're going to start meeting again soon, we meet monthly. We help with Teacher Appreciation Week, other kinds of events around the school. I'm on the, part of the senior parent group now because I now have a senior, so we want to make our seniors' year memorable. I see students three days a week when I'm in the building. So I'm working alongside them, asking them how their day is going. I tend to really keep a close eye on the special ed students, I love working with them. If I see students that are often alone, you know, I will make sure that I talk to the appropriate staff to see that these students are doing okay, and if there's any needs that had to be met, I will advocate for the students and the teachers as well, but especially the students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Connor, please.
Repeat the question again?
Sure can. As a potential board member, please state your current involvement in the schools. Give examples how you engage with students or school events.
I am on the school board right now in Romeo. And one thing I did last year was I adopted a school, which was Hamilton Parson. And I attended events and I helped at the school. And I read to some of the students at the school at Hamilton Parson, that was last year. And I'm on the security and the financial committee for the school board. And as I was saying before, I'm actually the legislative liaison at Macombe and Emeat Schools. And I bring that back to Romeo Schools and I share the information with them. And I just like to help people out.
Thank you so much. Next question, we'll go first to Ms. Seitz. How should the school address the short-term and long-term growth anticipated over the next years?
Oh, wow, that's a loaded question. Well, it's coming, we we see it. Short-term, I think we need to look at the student to staff ratio. I think that's going to tie into safety, making sure that, you know, we have enough staff to make sure that everyone is safe. Long-term, I mean, we're going to have to look at, you know, parent surveys. What are we going to do with school of choice and kids coming in? You know, what is that going to look like? Do we need to build out another high school, maybe another elementary school? I know there's talk of of some of that. So really, it's going to be a lot of collaboration between the board and the community and what they think they want to do.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Smith?
To echo just generally what Ms. Seitz said, I think, you know, you need to look at class sizes, you need to look at safety, you need to consider all of those things, but also long-term studies, you need to look at consultancy. You know, how does that look? What is it, what is the footprint of the schools look like and then what the funds are? So what do we need to do to expand if and when we determine that there's an expansion necessary? So I think there's a lot of different ways you have to consider it. But I would say in general, to sum it up, you have to look at what makes sense in the short-term, preserving the class sizes so that they're not too big and it doesn't cause a safety issue. I think long-term, then again, the footprint of the school, the projected expansion of the population, school of choice, and then how do you fund it? I think those are the main key points you need to consider because without any of those, I don't think you can reliably make the choice that works best for the district.
Thank you. Ms. Chahaki, how should the school address the short and long-term growth anticipated over the next years?
Sure. I truly believe that they ask the stakeholders what they believe should be happening with their tax dollars. Short-term, I believe you need to close school of choice in order to stop the growth for right now. Long-term is adding on to the high school and potentially opening up another elementary school. Because we are growing out here with everybody wanting to move north.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Bowman, please.
Growth definitely is an issue, I see the class sizes rising. School of choice is a great thing, but I think we need to have stricter guidelines for school of choice versus those of us that pay taxes in the district. I've lived in other states and we were often school of choice in different schools. And we had a stricter set of guidelines being in those schools, so behavior, you name it. We were given less chances on things because we were privileged to be in that, allowed to attend that district. Secondly, as far as adding another middle or high school, which is looking like that might come down the pike, I think we need to survey the community to ask them how they feel about it, location-wise, get their input. I also think that we need to survey and study other school districts to see how they handle their growth. Like, we look at Dakota, Chippewa Valley, that's the best way to learn how to deal with the sheer size of homes and people coming out this way.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Connor?
Long-term growth, I think Romeo, out of all of Macombe County, we're the only one that's increasing right now. And we have, we have an academy for the high school and we're working on a middle school academy right now. And there is school of choice that we do have. And I just think people want to get into Romeo because of the academies. You don't necessarily have to go to the college at the end. You know, you can go to security, you could be a beautician, you could go into college, whatever you'd like to do. But you can get a job right in high school, in the 12th grade. And I don't think anyone, the only one that has an academy, I think, is Utica. And Macombe has one, for all of Macombe County, but we're the only one with an academy. People want, they want to live in Romeo because of what we have out here.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Boyer, how should the school address the short and long-term growth anticipated over the next years?
Yes, thank you. I addressed this in one of my top issues of concern. One area I didn't address was elementary schools. We have to figure out placements of elementary schools, keep the class sizes down to a manageable level. Also, with more children comes expansion of security. What do we do with security in the schools, expanding schools, the security for that, as well as additional kids in the school? How do we increase security efforts and manage the amount of kids that are flowing in and out? I stated before about a survey, I agree, a survey is probably the best thing. The voters are going to put the money toward it, obviously, so we want their opinion, we want to know what they want. And we are the Bulldogs, so it's it's a hard thing to say, do we do, create another high school? Do we create a mega school? I mean, are they the mini Bulldogs or whatever? I mean, this is a huge subject and it's very important to to this community because we we always identify as Bulldogs. So it's going to be a fun, tough subject, and I look forward to that challenge.
Thank you so much. And next question, we'll go first to Mr. Smith. With the recent changes to the title, to Title IX, should individuals who are biologically male but identify as female be permitted to use female locker rooms and restrooms or participate on female sports teams?
Wow, you gave me a real easy question here. I'd have to say, let me first start with the bathroom topic. I will say, the school district has responsibility to protect students, whatever that looks like. So I think in the case of, we'll call it the bathroom situation, I would say that it would have to be determined on a case-by-case basis. I don't know that anybody can say definitively what that answer has to be due to a number of concerns. One of which is making sure that the school is in compliance with applicable state and federal law. Opening up the school to a potential lawsuit doesn't do anybody any good. Secondly, I would say that it would have to be the determination to look at, the school district would have to look at the policy in place, how that compares to the policies at the state and the federal level and ensuring that there is compliance. But also allowing parents and teachers and whomever on those case-by-case bases to give their input. Because like I said, student safety, priority number one across the board. Regarding sports, I would say very similar, ran out of time. Gave me an easy question, but only a minute, right?
We'll try. Thank you so much. And Ms. Chahaki, please. Sure, I can. With the recent changes to Title IX, should individuals who are biologically male but identify as female be permitted to use female locker rooms and restrooms or participate on female sports teams?
Okay. I'm very passionate about this this topic. So my, I have a daughter and I am not willing to give up her privacy to make somebody else comfortable. Now, I'm not saying that I'm I'm not willing to help these children who are transitioning or how, whatever it is. I know Romeo has a bathroom specifically for them. So I think that is a good outcome as far as the bathrooms. The locker rooms, no, I do not agree with men in women's locker rooms or on sports teams. As far as being sued and losing funding, I am willing to get sued and lose funding for what's right.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Bowman, please.
Sure. I'm for policies that protect all students, but that does not mean infringing on the privacy rights of other students. I have three daughters, so I think that answer is pretty clear. I do not want biological males in my daughter's bathroom. I don't want biological males in my staff bathroom. I think everybody should have dignity in their private spaces. So currently, we do offer that third-party private bathroom option. I think that's the fair way to make sure everybody's comfortable in their spaces. Prior to Title IX, hold on, I had my notes. So prior to the, to making, signing Title IX into law in 1972, two in five girls played sports, I'm sorry, one in 27 girls played sports at that point, and 15% of college athletes are women. Now, since Title IX has been enacted, two in five girls play sports and over 40% play sports in college. So I think that's an important thing to focus on and not take those opportunities away from those female students.
Thank you. And Mr. Connor?
One more time.
Sure. With the recent changes to Title IX, should individuals who are biologically male but identify as female be permitted to use female locker rooms and restrooms or participate on female sports teams?
Title IX, let's see, male, female teams. I think they need to be separated, you know, by locker room. And we abide by whatever the state and the federal guidelines are for Title IX. And we do have separate bathrooms, if they need to have a separate bathroom. And we just abide by whatever the state and federal guidelines are. And it has to be taken to the policy committee, and then we have to, we have to look at it. We have to abide by the law, and then we have to, whatever it is, we'll come up with a policy and we'll read it at the board meeting.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Boyer, please.
Okay. So currently, we are protected under the federal courts right now in this area until the Supreme, under the injunction, until the Supreme Court rules on it. But personally, no, a biological male should not be in a female's bathroom. One big thing, I listened to a current interview, I encourage you all to, with Riley Gaines in the Mike Rowe Show. She said, when she heard the male voice behind her when she was changing out of her swimsuit, and how intimidating or frightened that made her, and how, you know, they said they had to change the rules to allow him into the bathroom. So it wasn't that he was automatically in the sport. They had to change the rules to allow him to the bathroom. Then, she, not only that, but she had her dreams and aspirations ripped away from her when she tied this individual, and the determination of that tie was to give the trophy to the male, the biological male. I have two daughters. I've coached them. I would never want to see their dreams and aspirations taken away from that. One other thing, too, that federal funding is only 10%, okay? So we're not talking a major number here. Sorry, I could go on for this for a while, too.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Seitz, please.
So ultimately, I am about protecting students, and that's all students. I do understand the concerns. I am, you know, open to the conversations with parents. Ultimately, you know, for me, it's about how do we monitor that? How do we know someone doesn't enroll their student under, you know, a biological male under a female name? You know, so it's hard. How would we monitor exactly? That being said, I do think Romeo having a gender-neutral option is the best safety for both the student and, I'm sorry, the transitioning student as well as, you know, all students, because, you know, safety is a concern. My personal belief is, you know, I know 40% of the LGBTQ teenagers and children are known to have suicidal thoughts. So ultimately, I would be for the policy that's going to keep the children alive. So that's kind of where I stand.
Thank you very much. Next question, first to Ms. Chahaski. Chahaki, I'm sorry. As a public educator myself, I would like to know how each of you would support teachers who don't necessarily align with the teachers' union politics?
I would really, honestly, I really just want to go into the schools and talk to all the teachers and gather their thoughts of what they, their pros and cons of what they're dealing with. Because I know right now we have some teachers who are having a really hard time that can't go and talk to their union because of different political views. So even them just coming to us and voicing their concerns, we can bring it to the board and all discuss it, and then we could go about it as a board.
Thank you. And Ms. Bowman, please.
I'll echo what Brielle said. I currently work alongside a lot of these teachers, and some of them have come to me with some things and concerns that they're too afraid to address with administrators even, or the teachers' union. So I don't think that, that's a good thing, because it's affecting our students, it's affecting their work environment. So I would like to be the voice for teachers, to bring it to the board table. I will not shy away from being blunt and letting them know what I'm being told, but protecting the privacy rights of those teachers if they don't want their name. So I think, I think that's important, that we do listen to them, because they often feel railroaded by the union because it's gotten so political. So they often feel like their needs in the classroom and their concerns are not being met. So I would like to be that voice for them.
Thank you. And Mr. Connor, as a public educator myself, I would like to know how each of you would support teachers who don't necessarily align with the teachers' union politics?
Public teachers don't align with the union politics. First off, I'm a union person 100%, and we don't really get involved in that. That would be a union thing, that they would take care of that part. We would not take care of that on the board.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boyer?
Question again?
As a public educator myself, I would like to know how each of you would support teachers who don't necessarily align with the teachers' union politics?
Okay, good, thanks. Very good question, because the union is throwing a lot of money at this campaign. I want to hear from all teachers, what their opinion is. I want every teacher supported, every teacher should be supported, whether the union is behind them or not supporting them. The participation in the Romeo Schools is not 100%. I don't know what the exact number is. But every voice should be heard. Now, politically, I don't think there's room for politics in the schools, especially when you're with the kids. But political issues outside of that, where a teacher brings an issue to the board, that should be heard, no matter their union affiliation either way.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Seitz?
So obviously, we are teacher-union endorsed. I do support the union. However, ultimately, your vote is your vote. Just because the union endorsed, you know, certain candidates does not mean that every teacher is going to vote for us. The union is simply a group of their peers that they voted to interview, you know, candidates. I support you, just like I support a union member. Your privacy is yours. If you have a concern and you want to talk to me, or, you know, any of the board, ultimately, I'm to talk to you. But what you, what the union does is not, you know, the school board members are not a part of the union. How they handle their inner politics and how that works is on them. So you receive the same support as a non-union member. That's the ultimate answer.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith, how to support teachers who don't necessarily align with the teachers' union politics?
I would say it's important to remember, everybody in this room and all of the voters, whether you vote for me or not, if I get on that school board, I represent the entire community, one way or another. That goes for the teachers. So whether you're a member of the union who chose to endorse me, or you're somebody who decided against that or doesn't want to get involved, I'm still going to do what I can, and I'm still going to support you 100%. I don't want anybody ever to feel like, because we disagree at some point on some topic, or maybe every topic, that I'm not going to sit down and listen to you if I am an elected person whose responsibility it is to represent the community. So I think in general, I would invite whomever that is to reach out to me and to say, I have a concern. I have a question. I will not ask. I do not care if you were on the union or whether you voted for me. I have a responsibility as an elected person to represent everyone, thus to listen to them.
Thank you. Next question, first to Ms. Bowman. Do you support Project 2025, specifically the elimination of the Department of Education and reassignment of special education funds?
I don't follow Project 2025, so I don't really know too much about it. As far as the amount of control that the Department of Education has on the federal and the state level, I do think it should be minimized in some areas. I think they get involved too much, especially when it comes to politics, and it's having a negative effect on our teachers, a negative effect on our students and parents. So I think there should be parameters and limits to the involvement. And what was the special education?
And reassignment of special education funds?
Yes, we do need more funds going from one area to special education, because the teachers that I work with in special ed daily tell me they don't get the funding that they wish they had. They would like a facility in our district for some of the students that have more severe needs. So I would definitely like to see that funding get pushed their way.
Thank you. And Mr. Connor?
Question again?
Sure. Do you support Project 2025, specifically the elimination of the Department of Education and reassignment of special education funds?
Project 2025, special education? I don't know if a lot of people know this, but in Macomb County, we actually get the most amount of money for special education in Macomb County. And separating them from the board, we need money in all areas. And we get a lot of grants in Macomb County. In fact, we're the highest in all of the counties in Michigan for the amount of money that we get for special education.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Boyer, please?
Okay. I'm not ultimately familiar with Project 2025 in the statement there, but elimination of the Department of Education? I'm kind of running for a school board, so that would be counterintuitive to what I'm doing right here. Special education funds, you're saying eliminate them, but the question is...
A reassignment, and the department, eliminate the Department of Education and reassign, the reassignment of special education funds?
Sure. Again, reassigning special education funds. Obviously, we talked earlier about funding for special education, very important. So yes, allocating those funds to special education would be important. But again, I'm not for the getting rid of the Department of Education, so it's kind of a counterintuitive there. But I will say, we always know when the government has money like this, it's not always spent well. They don't really know what's going on at this level. So at our level, at the board level, we need to know what's good for Romeo Schools, not what's good for the rest of the country.
Thank you. Ms. Seitz, please.
Similar to what Mr. Boyer said, obviously, running for school board, I'm not for the elimination of Department of Education. That's why we have public schools. That's what, you know, they kind of oversee us. Do I think there could be better understanding, communication between the districts and maybe the Department of Education? Of course, I think we can see that across the board. As far as reassignment to the special education, you know, I am for more funding towards special needs, obviously. But from what I had read about it, it was going to be pulling away. So unless I misread that somewhere, that as far as I'm concerned, you know, the Project 2025 is pulling away from special needs, not adding to it. So, no. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
I'll try to keep this short. I do not support the, you know, removal or the ending of the Department of Education in any way, shape, or form. If there are opportunities to improve, I think that we can make those suggestions, and we can vote, and we can do things to improve upon it. Regarding special needs funding and related topics, I think in general, almost everybody on this stage has said, in general, that we all approve and support and would do so. As school board members, additional funding towards programs that, you know, provide the assistance needed to special needs, so.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Chahaki, do you support Project 2025, specifically the elimination of the Department of Education and reassignment of special education funds?
I cannot answer that question, as I know nothing about Project 2025. But I am going to echo the other ones and say, I am for all the funding for special needs and special education.
Thank you very much. Next question goes first to Mr. Connor. What does diversity mean to you?
Diversity, what does it mean to me? We have the parents, we have the students, and we have all the teaching staff, and we have to have diversity in all these different levels. And I think we need that in everything that we do.
Thank you. And Mr. Boyer, please?
Okay. I'm probably the most diverse background of this group here. I'm the Global Director of Design Engineering. I have a groups all over the world, from Asia, Europe, Canada, North America. My wife is from Iraq, and if you follow my Facebook page, the head Imam of the Baltic States actually follows me and is paying attention to this campaign. So diversity is important to me. But in that diversity, I don't look at people for their diversity, I look at them for their individual status. When I'm dealing with a specific person, I'm not looking at what group that person belongs to, because I really don't believe in group identity. I look at that individual person for their capabilities, what they do, what they bring to the table. But along with that, in the group, and not looking at groups, we do have to be careful with bullying. When we come to diversity, there's a problem with bullying with people who are diverse. And I mean everyone who's diverse. Probably everyone in this room had an instance where they're bullied over something they did. No bullying.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Seitz, what does diversity mean to you?
Yeah. So diversity means to me, I see you and you see me. You know, that means we all come from different backgrounds, whether it's, you know, color, age, race, religion, you know, where we lived, you know, sociographical statuses, all of that. It's a matter of learning about each other, preventing bullying, understanding that my view will never be, your view will never be, you know, anyone in here's, you know, view. So it's all about creating opportunities for us to all learn about each other and, you know, kids to learn about what's out there in the world.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith, what does diversity mean to you?
I think it's a very broad term. I think in general, to tackle what some have set up here, there is, of course, diversity of background, ethnicity, religion. But there's also diversity of viewpoint, which I think is important to have, and important to understand, and important to consider when you're making decisions. So I think in general, diversity means, to echo Ms. Seitz, I see you, you see me, but I also understand you, and you can maybe understand me. So that doesn't mean that I'm not going to consider where you came from. Somebody comes from a different socioeconomic background, I'm going to do what I can to understand that in the context of the interaction we're having. Similarly, as a person that sits on a school board, I would imagine that the decisions that you make will be made with those considerations in mind. So to me, diversity has a lot of different meanings, but I will say again, in general, it has to do with your background, socioeconomic status, and your viewpoint, because I think all of those things are fundamental to a human being, and it's incumbent on all of us to do what we can to understand that.
Thank you. Ms. Chahaki, what does diversity mean to you?
Diversity to me means where you came from, your race, your gender, and it's just what makes the world go round. It's pretty simple to me.
Thank you. And Ms. Bowman, what does diversity mean to you?
Pretty much what everyone else said. I mean, I work with, we have a fairly diverse population of students, so I watched them interacting a lot during the day, so I do love to see that. I think we can teach tolerance and respect, but not force our views on others, our diverse views. It's okay to learn how to talk them out and have an objective conversation. Sometimes I think the hyper-focus on diversity is not always a good thing, because our skin color, where we came from, how much money our parents make, or what type of dwelling we live in doesn't always define who we are as a person. So I really don't think that a hyper-focus on that all the time is always a good thing. Skills matter, as Mr. Boyer said. It really, it comes down to what can you do, what are you learning, or how can I help you? That would be my answer.
Thank you very much. Next question, first to Mr. Connor. Where do you stand on the issue of prayer in school or the teaching of various faiths?
Prayer in school. I think you should be allowed, if you want to pray in school, if you'd like to. We don't hold that against anybody. And each student is different, you know, they have different beliefs. And we have to, you know, see what they believe in, and it's okay to have prayer in school, if they would like to. They don't have to.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Boyer?
So I would protect everyone's right to prayer, okay? I would protect the right for a Christian to pray, for a Hindu to pray, for a Muslim to pray. I protect everyone's right to prayer. Muslims have very specific times of prayer. The thing about it is, I don't want it to be disruptive. It cannot be disruptive to the class. And it can't be, another problem with it is it can't be pointed out, shamed upon by teachers or other students. This will cause bullying. So we need to protect those individuals and what they are praying, so that there's no bullying in the situation. But for the question of being taught in the schools, historical teaching of different religions, I have no issue with that. I think it's good for kids to be able to learn different historical, as long as it's at an age-appropriate level. Currently, it's in the 7th grade now, 7th grade right now, that's in the curriculum and approved, that they're teaching that, different religions from a historical prospect, perspective, sorry.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Seitz, please?
Yep, I believe in protecting children's right, or students' right to pray in school, teachers' right to pray in school. As far as teacher-led, you know, I believe that kind of infringes on the different religions that may be in that school, so that might look a little different. If there is a class... If there's a club and it's outside of school hours, of course, that's welcome. I know when I was in school, we lost a classmate, I can point out the room at Powell. They did provide a prayer room for us at that time, we could always go to it. So I think it's there, I think you're allowed to pray, you know, that's your American right. As far as teaching it, to what Mr. Boyer said, obviously, a lot of major historical events have been religion-driven, so I believe in that context, you know, exposing children to the different religions and lightly what, you know, caused some of this in the world, around the world, social studies, you know, that's important, too.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith?
Freedom of religion is a fundamental right in the United States. I think just about anybody understands that. So I will say, unequivocally, I support an individual's right to pray, when and how they need to, or when and how they see fit. Regarding the teaching of religion in schools, I will say, growing up in Macomb County, I thought everybody in the world was Catholic. I had no idea that there were other denominations or other religions. Wasn't until I got a little bit older that I realized there are diverse religions, diverse viewpoints. Was it a disservice to me to not have learned that when I was younger? I don't know, but I can tell you that I think, most cases, kids understand that there are differences, and I would say that if it is, to Mr. Boyer's point, age-appropriate, and it is taught in a way that respects every religion and makes sure that there is no, you know, beyond just the historical context of it, I think it enhances an individual's ability to understand the people that they live and go to school with.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Chahaki, where do you stand on the issue of prayer in school or teaching of various faiths?
Sure. Any student should be able to pray during school, or after school, or in a group before or after school, without being ridiculed. I'm not suggesting prayer time to be part of a daily schedule, but I do think it's everybody's right to be able to pray without being ridiculed. As far as religion in schools, yes, absolutely, because it gives students a broader range of people's backgrounds around the world that you're eventually going to have to work with and learn about, and, you know, even marry. I just don't think it's the district's job to present in-depth knowledge to the younger minds that are such sponge-like right now, like my second graders learning about God and goddesses, and I just don't think it's appropriate.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Bowman, please?
Yes, I don't think prayer should be led in public school, because it is a public school, there's private school, religious-based, but I will always protect everyone's right to prayer. I often see students pray before lunch, sitting by themselves, it doesn't really distract anyone, but, you know, that kind of warms my heart that they have the strength to sit there and do that, so I do like to see that. We have a national day of prayer every year, where we meet at the flagpole before school starts, so there's events like that. We have a Bible club that meets weekly. So there are other outlets for students and staff to do those things. As far as teaching religion, I think it should be historically based and kept age-appropriate. I'm going to echo what Brielle said. I've had some parents come to me with some concerns about their first and second graders learning about mythology and Greeks and gods and goddesses, and it's really a bit traumatizing to some of these students, because it's way over their head, they can't absorb it. So I think we should keep it educationally based, and that's it.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say one thing, that we do try to get to as many questions as possible, and there are quite a few, so we're trying to take a good sampling. So this will be the last question, before we go to the closing statements, and this will go first to Mr. Boyer. Do you think the school district does a good job for college-bound and non-college-bound students?
Good question. I think the academies are set up very well, especially for college-bound students. My daughter graduated, before the academies had started, but she graduated doing a lot of the business. She's now a CPA, working in the National Tax Office for a big company. I've worked with the Engineering Academy, they do a great job, love the stuff, the questions that they bring to us and ask. My next oldest son is in HVAC, I better say HVAC, if I say HVAC, he'll be mad at me, but he does, he's doing great in that, he learned, he loved the machine classes, he learned in those classes. So like the student that we had as an intern this year, the bulk of what he learned from Romeo High School brought him through, learning what we needed him to do in our very challenging field, and it, not a slam on Oakland University, because I graduated there, but it wasn't what he learned at Oakland, it was what he learned at Romeo. So academies are great, Romeo's doing a great job.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Seitz, please?
Yeah, I can say, when I graduated 20 years ago, probably not on the skilled trades, we were all just college-bound and had to, but I, you know, I've seen the academies grow, I've, you know, witnessed it. My sister graduated right before it, but we were kind of watching it at the time. We've got a great, strong academy, that is something, when people tell me they want a school of choice here, a lot of times, it's because of our academy program. We did seek out, I sought out a few union endorsements and kind of asked them, like, why they would be interested in Romeo, and they all said, you know, there's work out there, and, you know, a lot of these students could basically get a dual apprenticeship, and to what Mr. Boyer said, kind of graduate right into a very high-paying, great job if college formal education is not for them. So I do think Romeo does a great job, I think that's why we need to talk about closing school of choice, basically.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, does the district do a good job for college and non-college-bound students?
So my daughters are fairly young, so again, my experience is secondhand. I will say, I've seen kids graduate from Romeo and go on to University of Michigan and other very prestigious schools. I've also talked to some of the unions that we've received endorsements from, and they've said that the academies have set up the kids for success. So one example was, one of the unions was pointing out that the kid graduated with essentially the equivalent of an apprenticeship and was able to jump into that trade right away. So I will say, in general, I think they've done fantastic. I think there's opportunity to expand on that, and that is what I am looking to do, along with Kristi here, to make sure that we are setting up kids not just for collegiate success, but to ensure that when they graduate Romeo, there's a pathway to the trades and to other careers that are related to things that maybe aren't traditionally thought of after graduating from high school.
Thank you. And Ms. Chahaki, I'm sorry, Chahaski, Chahaki, I'm sorry, Ms. Chahaki, please?
Yes, yes to the college-bound and absolutely to the non-college-bound. As a wife and a daughter of tradesmen, I am so huge into trades, because some people are not made for college, and they need to go down the electrical millwright carpenter route, and I think it's one of the reasons my husband and I built our house out here, was because of that.
Thank you. Ms. Bowman, please?
Well, as a parent of a senior who's part of the HHP Academy at Romeo, I do know personally that they're doing a wonderful job. She's in the EMT pathway, so at the end of the year, she'll be a Level One Certified EMT, so I get to see firsthand what they're doing. We have work-based learning for a lot of these academy students, so like Erin was talking about before, some of these students can get jobs at local businesses while they're in high school, to finish their high school career and possibly get hired by those companies. College-bound-wise, Romeo does an excellent job, because I work with a lot of the counselors for my middle daughter, who is wanting to go to engineering school. So we have dual enrollment, so students can take college-level classes while they're taking their high school classes. We have AP classes, both of my daughters are in AP, so if they pass the AP test, that will count towards their college credit. So I could go on and on about this, but yes, Romeo's doing a wonderful job in the trade and the collegiate pathway.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Connor, please?
We, at Romeo, we are doing a great job. We have the ninth-grade academy, and the middle school's going to start doing it real soon. The high school opportunity, we receive training in skilled trade positions and potential of a job during graduation, after graduation. I think it's a great program, and there's only two or three in the whole county that do this. And of course, we have the ones that want to go to college, we have a certain level that they can go to, too, but I work at a foreign motor company in truthfully, skilled trade. We don't have enough, we don't have enough skilled trade people in any of the big three right now, we're short everywhere. And the program they have at Romeo, I think is the best in the whole county.
Thank you very much. We will now proceed to the candidates' closing statements, not to exceed one minute, and the order of the closing statement is reversed from the order of the opening statement. And Mr. Connor, we'll start with you, your one-minute closing statement, please.
One minute, thank you very, thank you very much. I appreciate your support in November, so I can continue to make a positive impact on the board representing in Romeo schools. And I'm supported by the REA and the UAW Region One, and I am a war veteran, and if you need anything at all, veteran or student or whoever it is, I don't care who it is, just come and see me and I will help them get what they need to have done.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Bowman, please?
My experience as an active parent, volunteer, and employee in Romeo schools, I think makes me a good, unique fit to be your potential future board member. Strengthening school security, achieving academic success for students, and focusing on district-wide transparency are the top three things I'd like to focus on. We knew we wanted our children to attend Romeo before we moved here. We had friends from here, and we knew we wanted them here. So I can personally say that I intend to keep it that way. I'm not your average candidate. Like I said, I'm a volunteer, employee, and parent. Romeo Community Schools is invested in our students and our families, and I love that about it. So I'm invested in this district because they're invested in my children and everyone else's children. So there's three school board seats up for grabs on November 5th, so consider me, Allison Bowman, Erin Boyer, and or Brielle Chahaki on November 5th.
Thank you very much. Ms. Chahaki, your one-minute closing statement, please?
I love Romeo schools. We built out here for this reason. I think it's a great school district, and I want to keep it great. My goal is to better represent all students, teachers, admin, as a school board, especially since I am in the day-to-day operations of our district. I see the issues that are going on, and I see the really great things that are going on, and I'm really excited about over the next six years of all the growth, and I want to make sure we are doing what's best for all stakeholders.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, please?
Yep, I first want to thank everybody for taking the time out of their day to listen. My name is Jason Smith, just in case yet wasn't clear throughout the night, but I want to thank everybody, I would encourage everybody to research your candidates, to look at the issues that are important to you, and to understand, and I think I speak, hopefully, for everybody up on the stage here, that we're all looking to represent the community. So whether you agree with us or you don't, reach out to any one of us with any questions that you have. I am a very invested citizen of this area, I've lived here for 11 years, I have two small children who are in elementary school, so I will be heavily involved, one way or another, with the schools, at least throughout their duration, as children of the district and as long as I'm living here. I love the area, I give back to the area when I am able to, and I am looking to give back even more as a potential candidate for the school board. I want to thank everybody up on the stage for sitting up here and talking, and again, thank all of you for considering everybody, and please, reach out if you have any questions. Kristi Seitz, my slate mate, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Seitz, please?
Well, I'm Kristi Seitz, obviously, like I said, I grew up here, my family's been here, I graduated 50 years after my grandma, I've seen Romeo go through ups, downs, you name it, I've seen it, I've been here. I wanted my kids here, I want all kids to have the best experience, the one I did. I love our community, I think when you invest in your schools, you invest back out to the community. You know, a lot of us, a lot of my classmates, we moved back here, we live in the area because we had such a great experience. Romeo's just the place I always want to be and always will be. I hope that you, you know, consider me, because I do have a little bit of a different insight in my professional career with, you know, job services and career services, and helping the younger professions kind of, again, go from students to the workforce. So consider me November 5th.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Boyer, please?
Thank you. John F. Kennedy said, "The goal of education is the advancement of knowledge and dissemination of truth." This is very important, and near and dear to my heart. I have three graduates from here that are doing awesome in the world. I've got two coming up that are going to graduate from Romeo. It is important for us to keep them secure, to address the growth issues, and keep our curriculum sound for our children, for the future workforce, for future generations. In that, just not my kids, of course, we want what's best for all the students, for all the parents, for all the teachers, and all the support staff as a whole. Very important to be mindful of all that. So I ask for your vote, for me, Erin Boyer, Allison Bowman, Brielle Chahaki, that we have been running together in this, and we will support you and bring you forth through the next series of all the growth and challenges. Thank you, League of Women Voters.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. I wish to thank the candidates for participating in the Romeo Board of Education Candidate Forum. I also wish to thank our league members for volunteering their time to help this evening. Thanks also to WBRW-TV for recording tonight's forum and for the use of their facility. This recording will be available through WBRW-TV's website and through the League of Women Voters website. That's League of Women Voters, Voters, Macomb. The League of Women Voters Electronic Voter Guide covering this race and other Macomb County races is available on vote411.org and is linked to our website. The general election is Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Michigan now has early voting. Check with your local clerk for early voting locations in your city or township. You can verify your voting registration status and track your ballot by visiting vote411.org or michigan.gov/vote, or by calling your city clerk. Note that you can register to vote up to and including on election day. To do this, you need to go to the clerk's office and be ready to vote. If you're mailing your ballot back, please do it by October 15th. Be sure to vote, sign the envelope, seal the envelope, and deliver it to the clerk. That's sign, seal, and deliver to the clerk. You can also take it to a drop box. All ballots must be received on or before Tuesday, November 5th, by 8:00 p.m. to be counted. This concludes our candidate forum. Thank you, and good evening.